I'd like to call the Select Board meeting for June 26, 2023, back to order. We went into executive session to discuss three items that were on the agenda. The only decision was made as we did sign the employment contract with our fire chief. And the others, there was no action taken. If everyone would rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to open with public comments?
Good evening. My name is Anita Dussette. I'm president of the Howard Historical Society. How are you all tonight?
Good.
Good. Thank you, Anita.
Thank you. I wanted to let the Select Board know, and also the community, that we were contacted by Channel Five, The Chronicle, and they interviewed the Kroll Barn. And they also, they interviewed Paul Phillips. And he is our carver. And he said that the interview went very, very well. He was very pleased with it. And Channel Five people seemed to be very happy with that as well. Also, for the history part of it, they interviewed Lynn Zalazak, who is a member of the society. And she was interviewed, I believe, a week ago Wednesday. We asked when it was going to be aired. They said that they didn't know. So I don't have any information on that, except for just to kind of keep an eye on Channel Five for The Chronicle. I believe there was other interviews and things that went on throughout the town. But I just thought, as the society, you should know what the society has been doing at this point in time. Also, I would like to take this moment to just tell you that the society has some walking tours that are going to be taking part this summer. They're going to be on our website, and we're starting to advertise them. We have six of them that are going to be done by Duncan Berry up in West Harwich, Kings Row. And then we have five of them that are going to be done by Paul Doan, right here in the center of town. So keep an eye on the website, find out for the dates. If anyone has any questions, I'm sure that they can call the Howard Historical Society. And I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Anita.
Thank you, Anita. And that's a great job getting The Chronicle involved. How did they find you, do you know?
I have absolutely no idea. All I know is that they called the Historical Society's phone number, and they said that they wanted to do an interview for the history. They, they do different historical venues. And they do it across the state. So they chose this time Harwich. So I thought we were very honored to be chosen. So, like I said, I have no idea when it's going to be aired. But watch out for it, because it's coming.
Great. Thanks, Anita.
Good evening. Jill Mason from Harwich Port. I'm here to address some issues of Route 28 in Harwich Port. I have some safety concerns. I did email the Board of Selectmen and did get a response, but I wanted to reiterate some of my concerns. First of all, there's a serious line of sight issue in the intersection between 28 and C Street. There are a lot of obstructions that are in the public way in either direction, and that's a safety concern. Secondly, I think there are major sign code violations in downtown Harwich Port, specifically sandwich signs. And if you look at their sign code, the sign code states that the sandwich signs are only allowed one per business to be up two hours prior to opening and to be taken down at the closing, which they're not. I think if anybody's driven through Harwich Port, you can see how many sandwich signs there are everywhere. And that's not only a concern, because I personally think it's unsightly, but if you're vision impaired, that's creating quite a problem. And I'm sure if Barbara Yamamoto were still here as representative from the ADA Committee, she'd be all over this. It makes it very difficult to walk on the sidewalks. I'm not going to reiterate all the, you know, the points of the sign code. I think you guys can look it up yourself. But between the banners and the sandwich signs, it's way over the top, and I think something should be done. But mainly for safety purposes, people can't walk on the sidewalk without obstructions. And, and that forces them into the road. And that's not a good thing. We've got too many people walking downtown now. So I'd like to see something done about this, you know, before the summer really, before, you know, we're looking at Fourth of July. That's my concern. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jill. And I believe that has been referred, been referred to the Traffic Safety Committee. So I'll make sure it has.
I think it, you know, and I think the building department is in charge of enforcing the sign code. You're supposed to have a permit for sandwich signs as well. So I think the building department or planning department, somebody needs to look into the violations of the sign code.
Great.
I would make that request.
I will look into that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
I would add that it did get sent to the town administrator, and that was on his board for follow-up. So it has not fallen on deaf ears.
Okay. I'd like to see the follow-up, and, you know, I'd like to see them disappear. Thank you.
Thanks, Jill. Nice to see you also.
What's that?
It's nice to see you.
Well, it's not really, but...
Good evening. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. A couple of things before I make my one announcement that I forgot I really should be doing tonight. To touch on Anita's, this is part of the Chronicle item I brought to your attention a couple of weeks ago. They've been around Harwich. We're going to be notified when it is going to air. They were on Leo's Bar, Leo's Barn, Leo's Bog, the Brooks Library, Lavender Farm. So we have a big showing shortly on Channel Five. To remind everyone, and as Jill just brought up, we are going into the summer season. But we're also starting next Wednesday, the music. So we all know about the signs. But we probably should take a look at it sooner than later, because next Wednesday, we'll be inundated with lots of people listening to great music. So July 5th through August 30th, Wednesday nights, 5:00 to 8:00. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Cindy. Anyone else?
Hi, Carolyn Carey, Community Center Director. And I just wanted to bring you some of the July events that are coming up, the very beginning of July. By, backed by popular demand, people have asked us to give out more flags. We're happy to oblige, so you can stop by and pick up your flags. Happy to give those out. Also, the sign-ups for the community yard sale start July 3rd. Hold down, because there's only 35 spots, and they go very quickly. So the actual event is on August 4th. And I know you think I'm kidding, but it is a mad dash to get those spots. On July 11th, we are doing a talk about the heart of a gray wolf and how it relates to the dogs. A free talk at 5:30. And then we are going to introduce you to the community center's new pet. Don't get excited.
A wolf?
It is a snake made of rocks. And her name is Pebbles. And we are inviting the community in to paint a rock and make our snake grow. She lives at the community center. But please come paint a rock with us and make our little friend Pebbles grow. If she gets large enough, she'll have a brother, Stony, so. Hope you all come. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn.
I want to look into a different name.
Anyone else?
I don't know how you top Pebbles and Stony, but I'll try. So on behalf of the town of Harwich, we, the town, were notified last week by the editors of Cape Cod Life Magazine. And there, June 2023, that the town, through several programs, not the least of one that was just mentioned, the town of Harwich has been awarded the Silver Medal for Lower Cape Beach. The beach that won was Red River Beach. So I'm going to pass that around, and we'll have that displayed. The town also was awarded Silver Medal for Lower Cape Best Off-Season Event. And that was awarded for the Harwich Cranberry Arts and Music Festival. And last but by no means least, Silver Medal for the Lower Cape Best Summer Event, which is the Harwich Port Music Strolls that you just heard our chamber director say is going to start next week. So congratulations to everybody that made this happen. And we will make sure that these get posted to the appropriate parties. But I think that deserves a round of applause for those programs. And I'll need those back at the end of the night. Thank you.
Next is the consent agenda. But before I ask Jeff for a motion, I'd like the chief to come up, and he can go through some great news.
Members of the board, Dave Gilmet, Chief of Police. We have a couple of items on the, on the consent agenda tonight, a couple of personnel items. So the, the first one, Rick wants to come on up. I'd like to introduce you to Rick Pellegrino. He is our number one candidate as a result of a hiring process that we just wrapped up. We find ourselves down five officers right now. So we are in a constant struggle to find good help. But here he is. Rick actually has 10 years of police experience. He started on Orleans PD, and then has most recently completed five years with Eastham. And he is going to be joining us here at Harwich PD, hopefully with a positive vote from the board. So he's, he's got a bachelor's degree. He's a resident of Harwich. He's got a bachelor's degree from Bridgewater State University in Criminal Justice. He also has a JD from the Mass, Mass College of Law, Mass School of Law. He's, so he's a licensed attorney and member of the bar in Massachusetts. And he's also a certified MPTC Municipal Police Training Committee instructor. So comes to us, obviously very highly recommended. We're very excited to bring him on board. The best thing about hiring officers that come to us academy-trained with full-time experiences, it takes very little time to get them on the road. So it's going to be a highly abbreviated field training program. And Rick's going to be joining us on the road probably within a few weeks of hire.
Wonderful. Congratulations, and how about a round of applause?
Thank you.
Thank you. The consent agenda, Jeff?
Sure. I move to affirm the appointment of Police Officer Richard Pellegrino to the Harwich Police Department as recommended by Chief Gilmet.
You can do one more one?
I think you can do them all.
Except... Okay. Want me to keep going?
Why are we voting on this? Can I have a chair if that's okay?
Never mind. The chair will concede to better judgment. I heard a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
I will clap. Hope I never see you. I move to accept the resignation of Officer Christopher Aragio. Aragio?
Arigo.
Arigo, the Harwich Police Department.
Second.
We can do the rest of the consent agenda.
Okay. I move that we accept the resignation of David Spitz, the Brooks Academy Museum Commission, effective June 30th, 2023. I move to accept the resignation of Carol Thayer, Harwich Bylaw Charter Review, effective immediately. I move to affirm the appointments of Alan Peterson for the following: From alternate member to full member of the Planning Board, effective June 26, 2023, through June 30, 2023. And to affirm the appointment of Alan Peterson to full member of the Planning Board, effective July 1, 2023, through June 30th, 2026. I move to affirm the appointment of Marcy...
Vignu.
Vignu, as, thank you, as the Harwich Housing Authority Representative to Community Preservation Committee, term to expire June 30th, 2026. And I also move to approve the Select Board meeting minutes from June 5th, 2023, to June 20th and June 20th, I'm sorry, 2023.
Second.
Madam Chair.
Any discussion for us, Joe?
Apologize, just a scrivener's correction. The minutes are supposed to be for June 12th, 2023, and June 20th, 2023, according to staff.
That's what you said. That's what, that's what my motion said, Joe.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Michael?
I would just, Chief, through you, offer our thank you to Christopher Arigo for his years of service in Harwich. He was a, he was a great guy and a pleasure to deal with. And also to thank David Spitz and Carol Thayer for their service on the committees.
Absolutely.
Chief, you don't have to do that one.
Thank you, Michael. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, Joe? New business, debrief on the June 20th, 2023 Select Board Working Group Session. I guess I'll start that. This was a first event for us, at least in the times I've been watching. And I think we had a pretty good discussion last week around some, some real basic topics, like management of the town, the role of the town administrator, the role of Select Board, the role of committees. We talked about different priorities. And what I was really driving this for was get to what should be on our agenda. Well, to get there, you have to know what our priorities are. I put three documents together, one listing our priorities, one agenda items, and one's just follow-up that probably doesn't really relate. But those will be in next week's packet, because from there, the board will have an open discussion here in the public forum about how we want to prioritize these, which ones we want to do first. There was some discussion that maybe committees were the first one. But I wanted to have that discussion here in public. If anyone wants to comment on it, you will see it in next week's agenda packet. Any other board members want to comment?
I love to talk.
I know you do, Michael. Go ahead.
No, just thank you, Mary, for putting that together. I found it was very productive, and the board members were engaged. And it was roughly a two-hour conversation that would have been very painful for the public to watch on top of our other meetings. So I thought it was very productive, and thank you for putting it together.
Great. Thanks. Anyone else? Okay. Next is, I guess this one's due, Jeff, with a motion for a vote?
I move to vote to approve the acquisition through eminent domain, the land containing 21.07 acres, more or less, located off Seth Whitefield Road and known as the Judah Eldredge Property for conservation and open space purposes.
Second.
All in, any, any discussion? Michael?
The only point is, this, this takes $700,000 off of our owed taxes list. This was a lot of years in the making. The price of the land went up quite a bit in the amount of time it took to get it done. And hopefully, we never end up there again, that when town meeting votes and we get them done right away. But this takes $700,000 off of the owed taxes to the town. And we now own another 20 acres.
Anyone else, Don?
Yeah. Michael and I go a long ways back with this. And it's an extremely important parcel of property. And it's really nice to see it finally getting resolved.
Yes. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to approve and authorize the chair to sign budget transfers as recommended by the Finance Director/Town Accountant.
Here, first and the second. Any discussion?
I have, I have a little discussion.
Okay. Maybe Kathleen, do you want to come up to the table and... Thanks, Kathleen.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you very much. Good to see you.
We will. Thank you.
Just getting to them in the computer.
You're welcome to the chair, or you can take the podium. Your call.
That's fine. It's like I'm sitting, I know.
Go ahead, Michael.
Madam Chair, members of the board, I just wanted to bring to your attention, this is a request for budget transfers for FY '23. These transfers have been reviewed and voted on by the Finance Committee. Trying to think of the date, it feels like a long time ago. And you'll see, so it's on the Finance Committee meeting on June 13th. The three pages that you see before you have specific transfers between, either between the department themselves or from other funding sources. And the description of the reasons for the transfers are listed underneath each group. A lot of it was due to staffing shortages. So there's, that's why this references to higher professional services. And some of them are due to the seasonal wages because of the increase in the rates that are paid and minimum wage. That tends to bump it up a little bit. The largest is the DPW. And that's due to the purchase services. And purchase services entail all the costs associated with municipal waste and construction demolition. Anything that's brought over has to be trucked off. So those are the, the fees associated with it. And so those funds are taken off by the health insurance. That was where the majority of the costs were absorbed by. We were fortunate to have a healthy remaining budget in the group health insurance budget line.
Okay, Michael, I think you had...
And I think, I'll preference this with saying, I think that we need to come back to this with a topic, which I believe the town administrator has worked on. But I'll start with budget transfers for C and D expenses, $325,000. This is a common theme. We continuously get budget transfers in a, in a, in a very high amount here. And then I note that the money's coming out of group health insurance, $89,896, and $200,000. Those two numbers seem to be coming out of health insurance line items. Last year's budget transfers was very similar. Are we overestimating our health insurance and then using the money later? And I know it's a common practice for municipalities to do this. But I guess my point is, if every year we have an extra $300,000 in health insurance, are we overbudgeting that? And if Joe's got the answer, great. If he doesn't, I would just ask that, that we get it.
Madam Chair?
Is that a question to Joe or to Kathleen?
I'll take whoever wants to answer it. Kathleen wasn't here last year, so I think Joe could probably speak about it.
I will humbly defer to Joe to answer.
And wise move, absolutely. Kathleen has no fingerprints whatsoever on that budget in that regard. But if you recall, as, as we were building the budget process and we were waiting on various outside sources, such as the county, to confirm health insurance, we were operating on the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group, Cape Cod Municipal Health Insurance Group, a member of which I think Kathleen is going to be coming a member with Betty McClay, our treasurer-collector, meaning mercifully taking me out of it. But as a part of that process last year, they recommended that we budget, I believe, for 6%. As they went through their analysis, they thought they were going to stick with that 6%. They came in lower. By the time they came in lower, everything was already solidified. So it is fair to say that for the last two years, despite the fact that we were conditioned to be ready for higher costs, the trustees of that health group relied upon funds available. We always try to build some cushion, if you will, in our budget projections. But we also want to make sure that we're using every available source before the end of the fiscal year, and it becomes general fund, free cash, et cetera. So the budget assumptions that we used were in line with the recommendations of the Municipal Health Group. And then they made a decision, and it came in lower.
It's just to follow up on the, on the $325,000 overage at DPW. And I know we've discussed this in the past. I'd like to get a good look at why we're doing what we're doing when every year we have to do a $300,000 budget transfer for DPW.
Joe?
Point well taken. If I remember correctly, this time last year, that number was about $485,000. This year, it's $325,000. Certainly hundreds of thousands of more than anticipated. That is why, prior to Kathleen coming on board, we partnered with Clifton Larson Allen, or CLA. They're the accounting firm that was helping us with financial services before Kathleen started. That vendor relationship is now under Kathleen's direction, and they are completing an audit of the transfer station and all of those costs. So I know Kathleen and I are anxiously awaiting that report. And of course, as soon as we have a chance to read it and analyze it, we'll bring it back in front of you folks. And hopefully, that will give us the, the guide map to make sure we're not going to that level of overages or shortages.
Julie?
So I'm glad to hear that, because I think it is a bigger conversation we need to look at, you know, if it's something that's sustainable for us, because it costs so much every year.
Don, did you have your hand up too?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Madam Chair. Working off what was just previously stated, I have no doubt that the process that was followed was correct. All of this aligns well. But to Michael's point, when something happens year after year, it's a trend. It's not a one-off. I mean, the idea of making these transfers at the end of the year, wholly unanticipated circumstances occurred, so we try to even things out. But, I mean, the magnitude of the transfers is fairly significant. And I'd like, I'd like to see us be able to project better where we're at. Because if it happens every year, it's no longer unanticipated. You can, you can bank on this happening, and it probably should be part of the budget process in a more predictive way.
Exactly. Yes, I, I think based on my preliminary review of the audit of DPW, we have come up with a few solutions. We did, you know, research at great length. Certainly it's not finalized, so I'd hate to give too much of a definitive answer on it. But I, I agree completely. That's a, that's a huge transfer. And I think, given the, the information that she was able to compile, I think will really help us to make better decisions going forward.
Anyone else? I just have, oh.
No, go ahead, Mary, and then I've got a couple more.
I just had one that surprised me, was the snow and ice. I don't know anyone else, but we never had to shovel snow off my driveway or deal with ice this winter. I don't know why that would overrun. And I guess that's a Joe question?
Yeah. Well, I can answer a small portion of it just based on a review of the actual expenditures. There was a substantial expenditure in snow and sand. And I think that was done like in anticipation of a storm. Those resources are still there, you know, accessible. So that should make it much more manageable going forward. But it's, it's unfortunate, sometimes things are purchased early to get a better bid price. So it's, you just never know what you're going to get on for, you know. Luckily, it's, it's a resource that's still sitting there, but it does...
Thank you. But that, that does tie into the other, that this is a department that I feel like we're always... If that was in anticipation, that should have been anticipated when they were doing the budget. So I, I think that, that's in that same pile of, we got to look at that. Don?
Yeah, we, historically, we always deficit spend in that account. Because you can't anticipate, as you pointed out, you can't anticipate what's going to happen in the coming year. We always do that, and we always cover for it at the end of the, the year. This one doesn't bother me as much. And it's not as if we didn't get a lot of snow, so that meant we didn't do anything. Because there was times where we had ice, and they still went out and sanded and salted. But it, I don't see anything wrong with this, because this is the way we've been instructed through various town administrators and legal counsel to, to deal with ice and snow. It was always a deficiency account.
Joe, was that way?
It was, and if I may, the last point is correct and well-taken. Snow and ice is one of the few items that the Commonwealth allows municipalities to deficit spend on. However, as Kathleen has said, if you look at the, at the bottom of page one, the specific request is related to stockpiling of salt and road treatment materials. If memory serves correctly, we were a part of the county bid that went on that. The county went out at a time when these items were at the peak of the market. And that's what the marketplace would bear. So it's a combination of getting the material on property in advance of a winter. Hopefully, you use some of it, don't run out of it. But to the point of the lack of plowing is evidenced by the fact that the lease dollars were lower, and we were able to offset the cost in part based on that. So this was really based on, we're getting ready for a winter season. We don't want to know what it will bring. We've acquired it through county bid, and it is the one area that we can deficit spend.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any more que... Michael?
Last one, and it's more to do with planning, I guess, in case everybody retires at the same time. We all know what our OPEB number is, and I'm not picking on youth counselor. She's a fantastic youth counselor and runs her department great. Youth counselor, we have $15,000 due to higher-than-anticipated seasonal wage. I wasn't sure we had seasonal employees for the youth counselor.
Yeah, if, if I may, I think what the bottom of page two and the top of page three are getting to is, I don't know that it was seasonal wages. That might be a typo. I think they both relate to the unexpected retirement. Unexpected meaning it was not factored into the budget process, so Kathleen's predecessors had a process that, I will look in the direction of the finance director, town accountant, and say, we will probably incorporate that going forward, but it is, please think of any retirements that may occur so that we can set money aside. Any number of choices can impact upon those decisions made by those people. Have the money set aside, we still have to meet our obligations, and this is how we meet the retirement payouts that this individual is entitled to.
So I guess, I guess then, if I may.
You may.
I guess the question is, and I'd like an answer to this, because I think now that I've said it publicly, somebody else will want it. Deficit due to higher-than-anticipated seasonal wage, wage expenses. So unless you can tell me the youth counselor had seasonal wage expenses, then that's wrong.
That may have been an error of my part.
Okay. Thank you. So what is, what is that, can you get us a real what that $15,000 is for? And then to Joe, to your point, which was my original point, we also have $16,701 and $13,128, and that's directly related to the department head's retirement, which they're entitled to.
Correct, under their, under their contract.
But the first thing that comes to my mind is unfunded liability. How do we plan for this, and what do we know that's out there for other department heads when they leave? What are they going to leave with? And what if 10 of them leave in one year? How are we going to pay for all that? Probably not likely, maybe.
Sure. Madam Chair, through you, to the first point, how do we do it? Right now, it's very straightforward. There are two major documents that, in this instance, the scenario of a department head, we rely upon either the collective bargaining agreement for department heads, which is SEIU, or if the department head is under the personnel bylaws. That tells us the percentage and level of payout typically for earned time, vacation, vacation and sick. We could, as we build the budget, envision an assumption, but it would be exactly that. Much like we just talked about with health insurance, we could say, well, let's assume that X number of department heads are within this age range, they may retire, or other employees. Then if we did that, we could extrapolate the dollar amount to a pretty fair degree, but then we'd be setting the money aside. If the retirements don't come to fruition, much like with health insurance, at the end of the year, we have those funds set aside for no use. Not a problem per se, other than they will revert back to the general fund and then be part of the free cash. So to me, that's really the circular conversation. But our practice has been, and at this point remains, that we asked, department heads to ask employees if they're contemplating it, so that we can just consider that and set the money aside.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else? Okay.
Then, Madam Chair, if I could, that concludes everything. I want to thank very much our finance director, town accountant. She started June 1st. I said welcome, and you have to work on transfers. And the fact that she was able to turn it around so quickly is a testament to her ability and her collaboration, so I appreciate that.
Well, I thank you, but I, most of the credit goes to Megan Green, who has done a phenomenal job and has, had been keeping a close eye on all this, and we just had to find two of you things, so kudos to Megan, who has been a godsend.
And then if I could, Madam Chair, I would echo that then, as well, that we thank Megan Green and the accounting department for the efforts that she's been doing for the past year as well.
Sounds like we have a great team on board. So thank you very much, and please extend our appreciation to her as well.
I will, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, what's next?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt, but I, I believe it's something that needs to be, like, voted on.
Oh, okay. Did we?
We had a motion in the second.
We have a motion, second and discussion, so now we just need a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Five, zero, Joe.
Thank you, and the documents are in your signature packet, so we do need signatures on those to complete.
What I can do is, we had one that was just the master document, which could just be signed by you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Is this the best one to sign?
Yes.
All right. So then we understood that the vote was to accept the transfers and authorize the chair to sign, right?
Yes, that's what we said. And then they'll actually be processed tomorrow. And we'll be able to do one again.
Okay, what's next?
I move to, yep, D, I move to approve a new 2023 annual common vicarious license, CDVT Corporation DBA Heart of the Sea at 1421 Orleans Road, Orleans Harwich Road, pending fire department approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five, zero, Joe. E, I'm going to move to July 10th. This, this item is on the agenda as a discussion of a letter dated June 13th from the Bylaw Charter Review Committee to the Select Board. We received that in Town Hall June 15th, and I thought we were doing the right thing, getting it on the agenda pretty quickly, but I had occasion to have a conversation with a member of the committee who pointed out to me that that gave the committee no time to call for a joint meeting, for them to be at that meeting to discuss. So wanting to give the committee an opportunity to do that, I'm going to move that out, and if they so choose, they can have a joint meeting. I will say, I was, because I, while I had that person, and I'm going to name her, since the next thing will give her away, while I had Linda Sibula on the phone talking about traffic, I did comment on the article in the Chronicle with her picture talking about that. And my comment was that I was a little disappointed that we got a letter June 15th, and the very next Chronicle that comes out implies that we aren't doing anything. Linda assured me that she did not talk to the Chronicle, although her picture is right above it, which would lead you to believe it was her, and to the best of her knowledge, the chair didn't. So I would just like that for the record. We got the letter of the 15th, we're trying to work on it as quickly as we can, and I didn't appreciate the shot over the bow. Linda?
Well, I just wanted to publicly thank Bill for printing a picture of me from 10 years ago. Tegort. All right, close enough. But we did, the Bylaw Charter Review Committee did issue that letter, and we did not expect an article in the Chronicle, but of course, we cannot control the press, so I was as surprised as you are to see my picture there, but.
Thank you, Linda, and you looked great. So we will bring that back July 10th, and the Bylaw Charter Review is under no obligation, but if you want to have a joint meeting, we welcome you at the table. Okay, how about F, Jeff?
I move to approve and authorize the chair to sign a letter of support for the town of Harwich and Harwich Conservation Trust Eco Restoration Project as requested by Michael Locke, Executive Director, Harwich Conservation Trust.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero, Joe. G. Going to make a motion on G?
I move that we have discussion and a possible vote to approve a fee waiver for 204 Sisson Road room rental fees for the Harwich Cranberry Festival concerts in the amount of $450.
The first and the second, any discussion? Go ahead, Michael.
As stated many, many times in the past, completely against fee waivers. There's a cost to doing this. There's a cost for staff, there's a cost for cleanup, there's a cost for opening and closing the building, there's a cost for insurance. They're not asking us for half of the fees, which they graciously paid the entire amount last year. They're asking for all of the fees. And I'm sure that all of you can remember the many conversations we've had on 204 Sisson Road, and, and the beatings, for lack of a better word, given to us by the finance committee for lack of revenue. It makes absolutely no sense to take this building and give away the fees. If we're covering our costs, I could support it, or support a reduction, but it's nothing more than setting a precedence and picking which group is more important, and giving a fee waiver to somebody but not somebody else. And recently, a selectman paid a fee for somebody out of his own pocket, because we were choosing not to waive the fees. So where are we going to draw the line on waiving fees or not waiving fees?
I've already drawn that line.
You signed that line.
That's the line.
So, as stated before, there's cost to doing this. That building, we've told the public, we are going to make that building work, and we're not going to make that building work if we set a precedence and continue to give away fees that cover costs to operate.
Okay, anyone else? Julie?
So I don't, I don't disagree with you, Michael. I mean, I felt similarly. The only reason I, I second this is because I feel the Cranberry Festival is a bit different because it brings a lot of people to our community, and they're fundraising to establish, you know, the fall get-together, and they do a great job, so that's really the only reason for that waiver.
And if I could add to that, the part that had me in favor of this is, they raise, I think $19,000, that they give out scholarships to Monta Moi. I feel they're, Monta Moi High School students, I feel they're almost like a, they're not the Chamber of Commerce, but they're kind of like them, they're like a quasi-town, promoting the town. I don't know any other groups that I would put in that same category. Don?
I'm going to speak up in support of Michael here. In general, I, really, we have to consider where we're going in general with this. I know Michael has an absolute, we're not going to do it, mentality on this, but in general, you could make that argument generically about almost anybody. Hesh provides people housing. Everybody does commendable things when they're asking for the waiver of fees. It's not as if we even entertain one for, for profit. So by definition, pretty much everybody who's asking has some sort of worthiness to them, whether they're going to be promoting the town, or they're doing something that the town hasn't, doesn't have to pay for, because they're doing God's work as a charitable. Everybody's in that category. And this is probably a discussion we need to have a larger, you know, contemplated in a larger way about where we're going with it, because it's kind of, it's really difficult for me to even think about this. Like I said, Michael, I'm not going to keep writing checks, I can do some that relate to things that I really care about personally, but in general, I mean, I really think we need to do that, because it's kind of, Jeff loves the bromides, but it's kind of like deciding in your family which one of your kids you like best, and take care of them as opposed to the other people. It's, it's a hard thing to do. And we, we get these all the time, so it's a question of where, where are we with this? What are we going to do?
Jeff?
I agree with Don and Michael here, and I, I will also add, I think that, sitting on that side, listening to the deliberations and watching Don reach into his pocket, which is very nice of you, for sure.
My wife didn't say that.
I think, I, I don't like having to explain to anybody why we didn't allow it for you, but we allowed it for them. I, I think that's a bad precedent to set, and additionally, I think it's important that we set a policy. And we can kick that around maybe in one of those working sessions to discuss it, so that car is also not put under the gun with people asking, and then the, you know, the town has a policy on this building. And in, in my opinion, I, there's a cost of doing business, and we owe it to the residents of the town to make this building as profitable as possible, so I'm not in support of waiving the fee.
Anyone else? Okay. Should I do a, I think I'm going to do a roll call, because I won't be able to hear. Michael?
No.
Jeff?
No.
Julie?
Yes.
Don?
No.
And I've been convinced by others, so I'm a no. So that's four, four one, Joe. And we are on to Old Business, which is A, which is just to, we voted last time to confirm the Select Board Committee liaison list. Joe just suggested it's in the packet this year with all, this week with all the new assignments, that we put that on there just to confirm that that is in fact our list. And if no one has any other report, we can just move on. Okay, we are on to contracts. Joe, do you want to take those?
Certainly, Madam Chair. The first set of agreements, I'll call them, that you have, under the contracts are grant agreements between the town of Harwich through the Select Board, and these are three, three nonprofit groups, unaffiliated with the town, who are the grantees. The first one is Harwich Conservation Trust for the Herring River Land Preservation Project. The second one is relative to the Community Development Partnership, or CDP, their annual Lower Cape Housing Institute. And the last one is for the Harwich Fire Association for the 203 Bank Street Old Fire Station and Preservation therein. And then after that, Madam Chair, I had just a brief update on other projects that will be receiving grant money, but the request would be to, to accept and execute those three grant agreements.
Do you need a motion on that?
I would ask for it, just because you're also executing the documents.
Okay. Jeff, can you whip up a motion?
I believe so. I move that we accept the Community Preservation Act Agreement, Act Grant Agreement, the Harwich Conservation Trust Herring River Land Preservation.
Do you want to do all three together?
Yes.
Yep, can we do all three? Sure. Community, also, the Community Development Partnership, Lower Cape Housing Institute, and third, the Harwich Fire Association at the 203 Bank Street Old Fire Station Preservation.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, sorry? Yes, Don?
I, I just want to reiterate something I've said before. CPC already did what they did, and we already took action on these, but I am just concerned in the long run about these housing institute things, because I, I keep thinking in terms of seven or eight communities that contribute to this, you're winding up with one FTE, and they're not really doing just housing institutes, number one. And number two is, who are we addressing all these to? At a certain point in time, the people who were decision-makers have already been to them. And I'm just kind of curious about whether there's an endpoint to this, because I know Hack does them, MHP does them. It's just a thought, because ultimately, it's not just our 7500, it's what happens to the other towns, and it basically adds up to a whole employee for the year.
Should we put that with our housing discussion?
No, it's already been approved. I mean, I'm in.
No, no, I mean as a general topic, not, not for this.
It's a CPC thing. They have every right to allocate within their bucket the way they want to, and the town meeting has every right to say yes or no. We're just blessing it.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero, Joe.
Thank you. And then, Madam Chair, briefly, there are a number of projects that the town was fortunate enough to get the funding through Community Preservation. Every one of those agreement, or those grants, I should say, excuse me, that are related to town of Harwich and departments, there would not be an agreement, because the agreement would be between the town and the town. However, I have already committed to the chair of the CPC that I've made all the appropriate department heads aware of the conditions that we accept those grants under, and that, as you know, would be similar to what you see in these documents, and that is, after six months, there needs to be an update, adhering to procurement, et cetera, et cetera. So I want to put out there that while the town does not execute agreements with itself, we still hold ourselves to the same standards as any recipient.
And that, and that includes the reporting that CPC wants, correct? And that includes the reporting that CPC wants, correct?
Correct, yep.
Joe. Motion on B?
I move we approve a contract with New England Recycling Company, Inc., for the removal of construction and demolition waste, contract based on per-ton service fee with an annual estimated cost of $1,214,000.
Second.
Any discussion? I suspected that, Michael.
Just give me a second.
This is the same C and D we just talked about?
Yeah.
Overrunning about minutes ago.
So, thank you, Madam Chair. Quick math. Joey, you aware, is this the company we're currently doing business with, or is this a new company that took over?
My understanding is this is the current company that we're under agreement with because they acquired the prior company. So this is a new agreement with the existing vendor that came that way through industry contraction.
Okay. I know we probably cannot deny this, because these contracts are getting harder and harder to get, and I do know that there's been conversation about dump fees, and the structure of the dump, and where we're taking C and D from. But we're being asked to pay $125 a ton. We're charging $185 a ton at the gate. We are then crushing it all up, and then using a front-end loader to put it in a trailer, and then paying a trailer driver to drive it to Taunton, along with the insurance of the vehicle, maintenance of the vehicle, and how at $60 a ton are we making a penny to take houses from Provincetown to Yarmouth?
Joe, you want to try that one? Julie?
No, I was saying earlier, this is a discussion we need to have. I mean, as I said back in the day when Link was here asking for five-dollar increments to the cost, I mean, we're providing a service that no other town is providing, and at the end of the day, it's costing us a lot of money, so I think we really need to look hard at it. You know, I get that, you know, it's a service, but at what cost to the?
And that gets to, when I first got here, I was shocked that the transfer station is open seven days a week, all but, what, two days in the entire year? And if we, and I understand that the reason we need to be open as much as we are is because of these guys, so if we got rid of that, we probably wouldn't have to be open as many hours, and maybe Kathleen wouldn't have as many budget transfers to write.
If I may.
Yes.
This obviously leads to a much broader conversation, but more immediately, and I have no problems with residents filling the back of their truck and taking trash in at 185, construction demo at 185 a ton. It's the commercial that gets me, because it's Provincetown, Wellfleet, Eastham, tearing down houses, docks, boats, anything that they can bring in, and there's a line at the gate. At $60 a ton, nobody can convince me that we're not losing money on trips, and we are only hauling between 12 and 18. I've had conversations with other towns that use private haulers, and they're hauling 20-plus. So for me to vote yes on this, I need to get a commitment from the Chair and the town administrator, that we're going to look, before this goes into effect, at a rate change to cover this, because it's going up. And then there's an escalator per year in the contract of 6%. So the conversation for me isn't about resident dump stickers, or even resident C and D, it's about commercial. And I think to vote this, we need to have the conversation and up that to at very least covering our costs until we make the decision that we don't need to be everybody's dump.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In support of what Michael's saying, I'm going to say something that I've said before, where it comes down to fees and use it to apply to this circumstance. I don't like it when people talk about, well, you know, Yarmouth is charging this, or Brewster's charging that, because we're under an obligation to analyze what our cost to deliver particular service is by mass general law, which also means we're obligated to make sure that we're covering our costs under mass general law. So if this is shorted, we really need to look into that. I kind of suspect that Michael's right, that they haven't thrown enough into the hopper here to account for fuel, driver, truck, all sorts of things. This can be broken down, just like we did with the building fees. Who touches it? How long is, how much do they pay that person? Where does it go from here to there? Is there an overhead cost to keeping? I don't know myself. Is there an overhead cost that this demands a seventh day, that it stays open, or, well, there's a lot of questions, and all of them get down to dollar signs at the end.
Joe, will that be, will we get more light on this subject through the audit, or do we need to do something else with this?
So there's a number of questions that I've heard, including those last two. What I'd like to do is approach it in a slightly different manner, but I think I can, in the end, answer most, if not all, of the board's questions.
Okay.
First, you are being presented through administration from the DPW Director this contract, which is a successor contract to one that expires the end of this week. Notwithstanding that, I want to be very clear that the board, as the town, has several rights, not the least of which is to not accept this agreement. However, if you do that, it means that I would expect that we would have in the short term, and that could be anywhere from a month to perhaps three months, whereby the town would not be accepting construction and debris, while we deal with the issue of transportation. That's, for me, that's not meant to be a scare tactic. I don't view it as such. This is a major contract, where we've, you've already heard conversations and discussion with end-of-year transfers and everything you've just expressed. It is a fact that the dollar amount of this contract is met by the appropriation that's available. That is to say, part of the documentation you see there is that we have the money to pay it. So we could begin this contract, if you approved it, effective July 1st of this year, but if you then were presented with facts and information, such as the audit or any other information, the town would have to probably engage legal services to extricate us from the contract, based on the language that I see presented herein. So yes, I would expect that when we get the full audit report from CLA, because one of the things that Barbara Bjornson is working on at my direction is recommendations as to how the entire transfer station should operate going forward. That includes, obviously, fee structures and programs and services. Now, generally speaking, municipalities have been able to argue that any of these items are subject to appropriation. We have the appropriation, so that's not a reason to cancel. Furthermore, this entire exercise, although generally related to this contract, the audit exercise was born out of the Director's desire to have the board change the rate structure. And so, at, and I want to emphasize, the direction that I completely agree with and have no issue with whatsoever, I then directed CLA to do a comprehensive analysis, to inform Kathleen and I, the Director, and then for you folks, as to what we make recommendations on for your fees. So if the board is not inclined to accept this agreement tonight, there is a short-term impact of, we wouldn't be able to accept C and D for a period of time. However, I think you have to balance out that with your concerns with the contract. I hope that helped.
That did help me anyways.
I'd like to hear Michael.
Okay.
Two different things, in my opinion. Thank you, Joe. I know the money's there. Two different things. I don't think we should vote no on the contract. I think we should vote for the contract, because they're getting harder and harder to get. And as we found out versus other towns, they negotiated very long-term deals on their C and D, we did not. So our rates are escalating above other towns. The benefit to us is other towns don't allow what we allow, so we're getting it anyway. My point is, I have no problem voting for this contract, and I think we should, because I think it is a much better price at 113 than the competitor at 125, and I'd hate to lose that. With that said, only under the understanding that at $72 a ton, when we're hauling only between 12 and 18 ton, there's no way we're covering our costs, whether we have the money or not. So I would like to see on the next agenda, align item for a fake fee increase, maybe not across the board for the dump, but for C and D, based on this contract. So, action tonight, I'm fine with approving the contract, as long as we understand that there's no way we're covering our cost, and we have to raise our fee.
Jeff?
So as Mr. McCaskill and I were doing math here, I came to the exact same conclusion. I don't like feeling handcuffed. I think we have to approve this, for many reasons in my mind, but we absolutely need to do our due diligence looking forward, and get a better understanding, wrap our arms around what we're, I'd like to even know what we're losing. That would be a good thing for me to at least understand, is if we're losing, what are we losing, and how can we make that up? I also don't, I'm just going to put this on the record, I don't like taking care of the fans and not taking care of the team, and I feel that's what we're doing. Maybe, Don, you might use that one later.
I've got that down.
Yeah, you might use that one later, but I kind of feel like we're not taking care of our Harwich residents by allowing other towns to come in and exercise their right to use our C and D disposal availability. So I'd rather take care of the home team and let the fans figure it out for themselves.
Ra.
Ra.
Ra. Anyone else?
Joe, a question for you. When do you expect to have the audit completed? Because I do agree with my mathematicians over here, we have two of them to my right, that that ought to be looked at, but we've also got a pretty big audit going, too.
So I know that Barbara Bjornson, our primary financial consultant on this, is wrapping up her work. Has she given you a timeframe? Kathleen?
She's very close with being complete. We have not had a chance to actually meet to discuss and see if there was additional information that we needed to.
So we could follow up, I apologize. We could follow up to see if your meeting on July 24th is sufficient. I don't, I know it won't be for the 10th, because I won't have an opportunity to dive into it as I want to, and I would ask for that ability, but I think we can target July 24th, if that's agreeable to the board and it comports with what Barbara's doing. She's been at this since about mid-April, and so we expected her to be working for about three months on this project.
And I, for one, would rather do this once, rather than twice. If we do it July 11th, and we don't have all the data, we've got to bring it back in a couple of weeks anyways. I see Don and Joe. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm just curious, this is more of a question. What were the marching orders for the audit? I mean, is it going to actually result in us having a deep dive into direct and indirect expenses as they relate to this service?
Generally, so to the immediate question, the general guidance was, here is a proposal on a fee structure. I would ask you, the financial consultant, to analyze that, based on information you rely upon in auditing the systems. And so there was a processing audit, if you will, how do we do different things at the transfer station, the sticker shack, et cetera, and all of that then coming back to bear on rate structure, availability of program, days of service, all of that. I shy away from direct and indirect costs, only because I've heard that used differently in the town by other agents, and that was not an exact description for the financial consultant.
Don?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Mike. The way that I'm using it, indirect, is what I believe mass general law says, is that you can put, plug in costs that are associated with it that aren't necessarily direct, like the truck is a direct expense, but what portion of administration has to be allocated to run the program efficiently? There has to be some sort of management to it. Those would be legitimate, just as we set our fees for upstairs, for, you know, what permits we have, you can't exceed what it costs us, but we can certainly pump in overhead costs that would be allocable to that. So that's more than just, what does a truck cost? What does a fuel cost? What does a driver cost?
Joe, do you want to respond?
Well, in response. The general directive from me was to the CPA, to do an audit of this product and service, based on the proposed rate structure, to, one, make recommendations either to administration and finance, to then make recommendations to the board, or straight to the board, on fee structure, to capture all of the services that are presently being done, analyze whether all of the services that are presently being done are sustainable, given that there were two consecutive years of close to half a million dollars in transfers to make the operation whole. So what I'm trying to put out there for the benefit of the board immediately, and anyone listening or writing about this, is that there's a significant audit being conducted by strong financial background auditors that are familiar with municipal operations in general, and transfer and municipal waste operations in particular, and bringing to bear a lot of experience on that. As it relates to your discussion tonight, I wanted to put out some of the facts, I've heard some of the board members respond. I do not think the town will be harmed irreparably if you execute this agreement tonight, and then as we rely upon additional information, because, I'm not sure if I heard this correctly, but I would argue that the town still reserves the right to reduce programming. In other words, one of the ways that we can meet our costs, and, if I may, support the home team, is to reconfigure the programming that occurs over the next fiscal year, with that in mind, so that it doesn't do any harm to the agreement. They're still going to haul C and D away from us. The limits may be lower, but we're still honoring the agreement.
Okay.
Julie, so that's what I, thank you, Joe. So I'm thinking, you know, here we have two separate issues, right? We have a contract, Link has looked at the other major company, so the contract is a contract, we need it, we should approve it, and we should take under advisement the results of the audit, and understand that we're looking to recoup more money, and we need to look at what we'll increase those to, but I think for tonight, we should be able to move forward with the contract.
I hear consensus on that. Joe?
Sorry, I was shaking my head in agreement, but...
Oh, okay. Michael?
I can't think of a situation over the last eight years where we were presented something as in-depth as the town administrator is saying that we're going to get, that we haven't then taken two weeks or four weeks to absorb that information. And I don't understand what the harm, and I understand wanting to do it once. We have to advertise a public hearing. We are currently, starting July 1st, going to be paying $113 a ton, and we haul between 12 and 18, and that's going to yield us $864 to $1,296. And out of that, we have a scale house operator and maintenance, we have the crushing of the debris, we have the loading of the debris, we have the hauling to Taunton, we have the diesel fuel, we have the insurance, and many other expenses. Why wouldn't we get on top of this and immediately understand that the math doesn't work, and that we don't need an audit to tell us that the math doesn't work, and have a public hearing, and raise the rate based on the contract we're about to vote, because we have to vote it? And then get the in-depth audit, and then make the other changes and the other fee changes, but this one, to me, just screams, why are you waiting? You're losing money. And not on the profit side of it, because I know we can't say profit side of it, but just common sense. And we're competing with S and J, directly competing with a private industry, and the only town that will be cheaper than us that will even entertain taking this is Yarmouth. So maybe all on its own, by raising the rate, some of the people that are coming here from Wellfleet and other towns will trickle away, and then our decision will be made easier. But Joe, to your point, we don't have to take it, and we can concentrate on the home team. What's the plan for that? We shut down C and D, and we're going to hurt our own builders.
That's right.
We're not going to take any material from our own people, because we can't make a decision to raise the fees now, instead of waiting until after a very in-depth con- decision to raise the fees now, instead of waiting until after a very in-depth conversation, which there's no way we're going to take an action that night. We're going to absorb it, we're going to talk about it, as we should. We shouldn't rush any decisions after a presentation like that. So my point is still the same. Very willing to approve this contract, but we should advertise a public hearing, and we should change the rates on C and D based on what we're approving, and then wait for the comprehensive plan, in my opinion.
That makes sense to me. Don?
It not only makes sense, it's something that nobody's discussed so far. If we take our time and don't do this, it's not as if you can make it up later on in February or March. I mean, the building season's the building season. So the C and D is going to be out there at that point. What I would like to point out, though, is limiting this is not an answer anyway. It's just going to limit our loss. If we're losing money on each transaction, I don't care whether it includes every town or just our town, we're losing money on every transaction. So the only solution to that is holding a hearing to come up with a fee that covers everything. All we'd be doing is lowering the transfer at the end of the year, but there shouldn't be a transfer at the end of the year. It should wind up paying for itself.
Is there time, Joe, this question's probably to you, is there time to post a public hearing and time for our meeting on the 11th?
Well, I believe, and I think your meeting's on the 10th, if I remember correctly.
Right. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. The word "hearing" is meant to comply with a board policy on fee increases, correct? So that may be a 10-day turnaround, rather than, say, a regulatory body that has to do a 14-day hearing. Having said that, and knowing the schedule, I know that we missed the opportunity to advertise in this Thursday's newspaper, if that's the manner by which we're advertising. Next week, you're impacted by a holiday, so I don't know that you have the ability to turn it around without knowing the particulars of your requirements. That doesn't mean you still couldn't start the conversation on the 10th, if nothing else, because I think there's great value in what the members are talking about tonight.
Is that?
But procedurally, I don't know. I'd have to look at your policy against avail, you know, are we required to do seven, 10, or 14 days' notice? Is it on notice of a public input rather than a capital P, capital H, public hearing, as other boards do it? You might be able to turn it around, I just wouldn't know tonight.
But we could probably sort that out tomorrow.
Without a doubt.
Okay.
And I would just say, as soon as possible.
Yep. Okay.
So if it's doable for the next meeting, let's do it. If it's not, advertise it, we'll do it the following year.
For the next one. Okay.
To me, it's a completely separate issue than the big picture.
Right. And I don't think anyone at the table disagrees with you, Michael. We had this conversation last year, so yes.
Not in the same meetings we did the budget transfer.
What's that? Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think we've had a motion and a second and discussion. Any more discussion? Shall we take a vote to approve the contract? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0, Joe.
Thank you.
One more on C. Jeff?
I move to approve a contract with tie and bond in the amount of $100,000 for the development of a stormwater asset management program for town-owned culverts.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0, Joe.
Thank you.
I move to approve the following license agreements for the cultural affairs programming located at 204 Sisson Road. All three as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 5-0, Joe.
Thank you.
Town administrators' report.
All right. I've got some announcements to make. First, I am thrilled to announce that I have made an offer, and it was accepted. And I think there's someone else in the room who's going to be thrilled, and that's our finance director, town accountant. But we have been able to fill the position vacated by Megan Green when she was promoted to her assistant role. I have hired Crystal, I hope I'm saying the last name correctly, but Nojat, to be the executive assistant to our finance director, town accountant.
Nojat.
Nojat, thank you for that. And I apologize to Crystal. She is set to begin on the job next Monday, July 3rd, and we're thrilled to have her come on board. I know she's going to be a great add to the team, and I know that Kathleen's going to like me more because Kathleen has another member to her team. And I appreciate Kathleen's patience. There we go. And then, secondly, I'm thrilled to announce, the director of cultural affairs has managed our annual human services grant program. Kara has convened a review committee team and all that, and the grants have been made for fiscal year 2024. I will read the grant amount and the recipients in a moment. However, I would be remiss, first, if I didn't thank Kara for her efforts in taking over this program and relying upon her skills and background as it relates to grants, but also be remiss if I didn't tell you that the demand is still very great out there. So we continue to fund in the order of, I believe, $85,000 services grants, and we give out the full amount. Every one of the grant recipients, I believe, without exception, was seeking more than we were able to grant. In fact, the requests this year, excuse me, the requests for this cycle, beginning for fiscal year 24, were in excess of $120,000. So I do put that out there that I would like to have a conversation with the board as we develop the budget for fiscal year 24, and contemplate that, because every one of these recipients is known to all of us and the great work that they do. And I just think it's a worthwhile conversation to have to see if we can provide more to the community that's out there. Having said that, the applicant recipients are Food for Kids, Church of the Holy Spirit, $2,000 was, excuse me, $3,000 was requested and granted. Duffy Health Center requested $3,000. We were able to meet that for $2,000. Site Loss Services, Inc., Cape Cod and the Islands, they requested $3,500. We were able to grant $2,000 to them. The next one is Cape Cod Children's Place. They requested $5,000. We were able to grant them $3,500. Elder Services of Cape Cod and the Islands was requesting $6,000. We were able to give them $1,000. Behavioral Innovators Incorporated, or BHI, they were requesting $9,500. We were able to grant them $8,500. Harwich Children's Fund, they were seeking $10,000. We were able to give them $8,000. Homeless Prevention Council was seeking $10,000. We were able to grant them $8,000. Lower Cape Outreach Council was requesting $10,000. We were able to grant $8,000. Outer Cape Health Services requested $10,000. We were able to grant them $5,000. And the Family Pantry of Cape Cod requested $10,000. We were able to grant them $10,000. And Independence House Incorporated requested $12,000. We were able to provide $8,500.
I think you're reading the wrong column.
I did. So I did. And thank you all so much for letting me go through that. So here we go again.
I didn't know.
Here we go again. $2,000 for Food for Kids, which is what they requested. Duffy Health Center, $3,000. Site Loss Services, we were able to award, nope, I'm reading that backwards, too, $3,500 out of the $4,500. We Can, $5,400 out of the $5,400 requested. They were a new grantee. Cape Cod Children's Place, $5,850 instead of $5,900 requested. Elder Cape Services, Elder Services of Cape Cod, $4,000 instead of the $8,000 asked for. Behavioral Innovators, $8,000 instead of the $9,500. Harwich Children's Place, $8,000 instead of the $10,000 requested. Homeless Prevention Council, $5,000 instead of $10,000 grand. Thank you, I'm on the right track. Lower Cape Outreach Council, $8,000 requested was $10. Outer Cape Health Services, $5,000 granted, $10,000 requested. Family Pantry of Cape Cod, $8,500 granted, $10,000 requested. Housing Assistance Corp., $7,000 granted, $10,000 requested. Independence House Incorporated, $10,000 granted, $12,000 requested, meaning we dispersed out over $84,000 out of the $120 that was requested. The decision-making that I relied upon after Kara and the team presented it was to inquire, were we, the town, providing any other sources of funds to some of the recipients? And when the answer was yes, we were able to demonstrate that these human service grants, plus others, are making these entities whole. However, despite my poor reading skills tonight, I do want to emphasize that every one of these worthy recipients was asking for far more than we were able to give. However, we feel good knowing that we gave some, and the decisions were predicated on, are you getting additional funds? So I think it's fair to say that we're not leaving anybody short. Everybody's able to do the programs that they want, but we should have an earnest conversation as a community about perhaps stepping up our funds available.
Thanks, Joe, and thanks Kara.
Sorry for that excruciating report.
Thank you, Kara. I did find the report. When I read it, it was informative as to how the decisions were made. I appreciate that. Don?
To further support what Joe just said, if memory serves, the construct was a little different. In the early 2000s, it was a warrant article rather than included in the budget. But when Jim Noonan was around and Tony Pagliano were around, I think they were playing with $50,000 23 years ago.
Yeah.
So you have to consider the state of where we are right now, post-pandemic, and what money is worth now versus 23 years ago. I hope Jim is okay with that.
Thanks, Don. Anyone else? Yes, Michael?
Just because I neglected to say it when we had the in-length conversation about the contract and the dump fees. Kudos to the folks at the dump. Link does a great job running that dump. These fees that we're talking about and the costs associated are outside of his control on the costs. But by no means was I saying that the dump doesn't do, the employees of the dump, they don't do a great job at the dump, because anyone that's been over there, they run a tight ship over there, and it's a clean environment for a dump.
Very true. Thank you, Michael.
I think they would call a transfer station, but we get it.
Joe, does that conclude your report?
Mercifully, that concludes my TA report. Yes, thank you.
Selectmen reports, Michael?
I already said it.
Jeff?
I have nothing to add.
Julie?
I have nothing.
Don?
Run out of things.
I just have one. There was another one of our teachers, Sheri Ann Armstrong from Montemoy High. She is a rising star in the Cape and Islands Workforce Board. There was a nice picture of her, an article. So it's so nice to see our teachers recognized. So I just wanted to share that. And I neglected something, I think, when we came back. We're going to take a motion to adjourn in a moment, but we're going back into executive session to finish up the topics we started earlier today. We will not be reopening open session. I think that's all I need to say, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Just to say that you will be adjourning the entire meeting at the conclusion of executive session.
Oh, so we don't adjourn here?
Correct.
Okay. What he said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If we're still going, are we still going? Thank you. I'm sorry, before everyone leaves, so your next select board meeting is scheduled for Monday, July 10th, here in the Griffin Room, and just want to wish everybody a happy Independence Day next week.
Great. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Sorry about that.
Michael, my box is full. Can I use some of your carts?
Yes, you can.